At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. We want to welcome everybody to our boardroom. This is going to be the last meeting that the board officially has as far as our monthly meeting in this room. And I think it's fitting to come here. Our chairman did too, and the board members did also, to have a meeting here to remember now, two of our board members, this is their first official, big, monthly meeting in here. So Chris and Patrick will be in here tonight, and then they'll move on to the new boardroom next month. Now, Brenda's been here about, how many years, Brenda?
Four years now.
Four years.
April will be four years.
Four years. So she's, we shared a meeting wonderful times in this room, haven't we, Brenda? And so has our chairman, Tony Brown. So anyway, we'll talk more about that later. So we always begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. So I'd like to ask everybody to please stand, and Commissioner Ellis will do our prayer, and then Commissioner Allison will release and our pledge.
Take them off by our heads. Father, we come to you today to just say thank you for the love that you've given us. Thank you for your son, for our failures. I'd like to ask for your guidance in our lives. I'd like to ask for your guidance in this meeting. Help us be aware and make known the positive things that are happening in McDowell County, the good things that we can plan for, and help us see them through. We'd just like to ask you, again, your guidance in our lives, your light to shine through us. And again, thanks so much for sending your son for our failures. Your prayer.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we have the approval of our minutes. So we have four sets of minutes. What's the pleasure of the board concerning the minutes?
Make a motion that we accept the approved minutes as stated, including the closed session minutes.
Second discussion, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let's move to the approval of tonight's agenda. First of all, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda by staff and/or commissioners?
If none, I'd like to make a motion to accept them as presented.
Okay, have a motion.
Second.
Second, discussion, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let's move to the first item. We do have Mr. Abenath with us, and he has, he's got an obligation. So we'll try to move him up as we get started here in a little bit. But we do want to say it's good to have William Keller with us. Mr. Keller is our astute leader among our EMS, and we're so excited about him and the new base and the positive outcomes that are going to come from that new location. So William is here to give us the COVID-19 update. So sir, the floor is yours. And William's been in one or two meetings in this room too, haven't you, William?
A couple meetings. Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to present yet another COVID-19 update. Today is day 700 of COVID-19 response in McDowell County. We are seeing promising trends in the data, as last week represented the third straight week of declining new case counts. Each week, we're seeing a 25% to 29% decrease in new cases. Our 14-day positivity rate dropped 5.4%, or 5.4 percentage points today, down to 23%. This will be a lagging indicator going back down because the number of tests being conducted is slowing as we have peaked about four weeks ago, three to four weeks ago. Hospitalizations are slowing. Unfortunately, death count continues to rise, which mirrors the last surges that we've been through. There was four additional deaths reported today, and we're following a number of other deaths, waiting on confirmation. Multiple outbreaks in long-term care facilities do continue. We are providing PPE and operational support through our EOC liaison. Our internal forecast, looking at new case counts, we are forecasting that by next week, we will be at the same level that we were at back in December when the mask mandate was put into effect for county employees. The EOC is actively engaged in carrying out our demobilization plan, being led by Deputy Director Jones. This plan seeks to ensure that we have a smooth transition of COVID-19 operational items from emergency services back to the Health Department. Key focus is public information, making sure folks know what number to call, where they can access services, and transitioning this as smoothly as possible. Vaccines, we're on the vaccine front. We will be ending the drive-through clinic at the end of February. We have transitioned over to more flexible scheduling with the Health Department, offering appointments on a daily basis. They have a scheduler at the Health Department to answer those calls, and that is one of the transition items away from our COVID hotline, back to the Health Department. Daily press releases have been updated to reflect all of this new information, and we do expect changes in the daily reporting, also known as the daily press releases on COVID-19, as the numbers continue to fall. The month of March will serve as our final transition period, shoring up any, or tying up any loose ends that we see, and addressing any points of confusion that may come up between on the public relation or public information side with our operation. 700 days is an extensive amount of time to run an EOC operation. Really proud of the work that the community, our team, has done, and these people remain unfocused, staying within our bounds, and trying to stay afraid of the plenty of noise that has been out there for 700 days with this incident. I'm really proud of what we've accomplished. When you look at testing, testing was in short supply. Now, testing, for the most part, you can be tested when you want to. Vaccines were in short supply, and now vaccines are abundant throughout the private sector, and also continues to be offered at the Health Department. PPE was in short supply. PPE is now abundant. The EOC continues to closely follow this, but we are slowly coming to the end of the Emergency Operations Center's objective in completing the mission that was at hand with this pandemic. I'm happy to take any questions you may have. It's nice to give a report of this nature versus some of the other reports that we've given.
Well, the board just wants to tell you, you've done an outstanding job, you and all of the employees that work with you, and your training, and your dedication, and the care you give to the people, whether it was at a drive-through clinic, you guys did great, and ladies did great, or whether it was over at Grace, when we had the big drive-throughs over there, and you gave them the shots. And I'll just say, as one commissioner that I really do, and I know our board does, and I'll let them say, now, we appreciate the work you've done. Outstanding. We've got the best in the state of North Carolina, and you're going to be in the best building in the state of North Carolina shortly. And we're looking forward to even greater things coming out of you and your staff, William. Brenda, go ahead.
I just appreciate everything they have done, and your staff. Everybody has always been there for doing everything, and haven't heard a lot of complaining out of them. So that's good. Maybe you have, but it definitely has not been noised about. So we appreciate everything you do.
Chris. Thank you, William, for your service, your sacrifice, and your entire team is just incredible through all of this. You said 700 days, and it's hard to believe how long it's been going on. And we appreciate everything that you and your team have done for our county and for our citizens. Appreciate that.
Okay.
I just want to point out that I've heard more, not just statewide, but southeast, of how strong McDowell County EMS is. And that goes to the entire group of you all, because it is the, it's the team.
That's right.
And the goal, too, Patrick, just to chime in, the goal of the board is to help you retain those good employees, retention.
It is, it is leadership, but it's also the team, and it's, y'all are definitely amazing.
It is a huge team, and many of those people, the key supporters, sitting behind and across the street. I think it is important, one last thing I would say is, just because the EOC operation may be coming to a close, it doesn't mean that COVID doesn't pose a threat, especially to the most vulnerable groups in our community. And it's going to remain something that will be here for time, and we realize that. But when we look at our key objectives, what we set out to do, we are coming to the point that the EOC operation is winding down, and we transition it back to the Health Department.
With that being said, too, William, just for the press or anybody else who's here or who will be watching, our chairman has COVID. So he wanted me to give a good report. He got diagnosed, I think, Saturday, Sunday morning, and he's doing fine. He's, he really was impressed, and it feels strongly, that the booster shot that he got, that both shots and the booster, has really helped him out. And he wanted me just to encourage anybody in the room to get vaccinated, number one, but number two, do the whole process and finish with the booster. The booster seems to be somewhat helpful. The shot nor the booster will not stop you, and correct me if I'm wrong, not stop you from getting COVID, but it will hopefully reduce the impact to you as a person, right, William? Is that correct?
That significantly reduces the threat of hospitalization and death.
Okay.
With it getting to a point of diminishing, as you said, what would be your recommendation as far as mask wearing for the employees of the county?
Yeah, so I think that's a great question, and as we've tried to stick to facts and look at data, by next week, our forecast is, at the point that you implemented it, we are back to that level by, by next week.
So we, if we don't make any motion to extend it next week, it will be up to the individual to wear their mask?
Actually, we'll have to take action tonight on it, up or down. Is that correct, Mr. Williams?
That's right.
So with that, for clarity, what is your recommendation?
I think sticking consistently to where we have been. We implemented it at that threshold, and it can be discontinued at that threshold for option.
What's the percentage amount we are away from where we were when you were able to start it going?
The 14-day positivity rate is going to be slow to decline because your rate of testing is, is slowing. When you look at the new case counts, that's what we're monitoring, and we're dropping significantly each week. A 25% to 29% reduction every week, and this is our, we ended last week, third straight week of decline. And today, we're about 25% less than where we were last Monday on the weekend report. So we're continuing to see that steady decline. That's consistent with where Omicron started in South Africa. It spiked significantly, very fast, and it failed very fast. And that has followed through the regions that it has spread in, and that is consistent with what we're seeing.
And is this, you know, we've heard, basically since the pandemic began, the term herd immunity. So are we starting to reach that now with the widespread spread of it through the Omicron, and so many people being vaccinated, and so many people who have actually contracted the virus? Are we, in your professional opinion, William, what are we at right there?
A little bit outside of my realm, but when you look at the number of natural infections and the number of people that are vaccinated, that's a significant improvement than what we seen prior to the Delta variant. But we also know people that had natural immunity, and even some with vaccine immunity, have had COVID multiple times. So as new variants come about, which there's thoughts that that is going to happen later down the road, it, there's got to be caution at all levels from a personal standpoint. The individual has to make the determination of how they protect themselves. And whether it be a mask, whether it is mask and vaccine, there's things that we know we can do to protect. These, this, these items are widely available, and that's why we feel comfortable in transitioning the EOC out of this operation at this point.
Do we know how many staff members are affected right now or quarantined at this point?
It's a lot lower than it was about a month ago. We still, probably less than, less than 10 definitely, probably less than five, that's the point. So it's a lot better than was after Christmas.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, if not, staff is requesting direction regarding the face covering policy. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to make masks optional effective today, or tomorrow morning, however you want to look at it. Make masks optional for all county employees.
Okay, got a motion, have a second.
Second.
Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, like sign. It's four of them, man, clerk. Okay, William thinks so much. There you go. Oh, there you are. He moves so quick, y'all. It's hard to keep up with that guy. Okay, all right, let's move to item B. We see Linda standing in the hallway, and she may have to go to Big Valentine's Dinner tonight, or something, so we don't hold her up. So Linda, come here and tell us about the tax lien advertisement and what you're doing, and we'll hear you glad.
Yeah, it's my anniversary, too, so I get double. Twenty-five years.
He better be good, he, right?
That's right. I got a good dinner waiting.
And you better be good to him.
Yes, thank you for having me. I am here to talk about the advertisement for 2021 taxes, tax lien. And per General Statute 105369, provided to you guys a report showing the total of unpaid taxes. On January 31st, 2022 was $1,641,521.35, and that was district and county totals. And the, in this binder here, I always forget, I'm presenting an alphabetical list of the unpaid 2021 real property taxes that was in that total. And the cost of the advertisement for this year was the same as last year, which will be $4,649.40. We always budget 4,700, and so that will be covered for that. And each name that gets advertised as real property is assessed that advertisement fee, which will approximately be about $2.23, so they'll get paid back to that when it's collected. I would like to recommend that we do the advertisement March 16th, 2022, and that would be the published date. And then the last day to pay would be March 9th, 2022. And of course, we did, I did send out a delinquent advertisement notice to the taxpayers on February 1, which this gives them 30 days to pay before being advertised, which is also by General Statute.
Okay, comments, questions for Linda? I will say that we have actually got one of the best. I mean, McDowell County is very fortunate to be blessed with good employees. She does not like to be bragged. She does not want to hear this at all, but I'll just say it anyway. Her and her staff do an excellent job. Being a tax collector is not a popular position. I mean, people don't give her high-fives at the restaurants when they see her family. They sort of duck and run and hide. But listen, I'll just say, this wasn't the Bible. It was a despised position, they said. But anyway, I want to say that this woman and her staff, they have got one of the best collection rates in the state of North Carolina. Now, we like to have good roads. We like to have new ambulances that can respond and don't break down, going to fix somebody up. We want our sheriff's department to have what they need. We want the record department to be able to have the best in the cost to have things. So she does a good job making sure that we are all held accountable to pay our fair share of the valuation and the percentage of the sake. With that being said, what's the pleasure of the board concerning her information?
I'd make a motion to proceed as presented.
Okay. Discussion, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, like sign. Okay.
She also has the resolution for overpayments.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Discussion, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, like sign. All right, go get some supper. Enjoy your, happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too. Thank your staff for all they do. They do an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Let's move to, let's move to, we got Chuck in here somewhere, Chuck, so we're trying. Let's, we got Chad right here, too, so let's get Chad up.
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the board, I'm good. If Mr. Abenath would like to go, whatever you'd like to do, sir, I'm indifferent. I'm
Sure?
Yeah, my wife's not been married a long time. She, we're going to be all right. If Mr. Abenath has got something to do, I'll yield to him, sir, if that's okay.
Okay, all right, well, just here again, shows the outstanding quality of our department heads, deferring his time to another person. That's great, Chuck. Come on up. Chuck, you're on that thing. Come on, let's get you up. Chuck is here to talk about the history of the Commissioners' Boardroom. This is the Been the Commissioners' Boardroom, and he'll tell you for X number of years. And this has been the home of many different previous commissioners, who've had the honor to serve the people in McDowell County, and do your work, and do your bidding. So Chuck, the floor is yours. Take off and tell us all of that.
In all honesty, I've got nothing to do tonight.
Oh, you don't?
I wish I did. I don't know how to remember it. I'll go.
Sit down, Chuck.
I am. I have no dates or anything going on tonight. You want to do just this, and you will handle the economic development thing later? Or you want, can I do both?
Do it all at once.
Right here, Chuck.
Can I do economic development?
Let's get you out of the way, so Chuck.
Okay. Real, real quick, I apologize for the last minute of this. I called Ashley on this. The state suggested that we get this project approved to make sure that there's funding for it. We've got a, an existing company that they've actually already, can't name them yet, but they're purchasing the Edwards Wood Products Oak Valley Facility and Woodlawn. They will employ 25 additional people and have an average salary of $41,800. The purchase and the upfitting is a $3 million project, so it's, it's real nice. All that the county, and you know, this is really getting routine with us. We're just not incentivizing like we used to have to do. All that we're being asked to do is a 5% match on a building reuse grant. I'm not sure what the match will be, because it hasn't gone before the state. Again, I was encouraged to hurry with this and bring this in, but the state said that it could be between $5,000 and $10,000 local, and the whole thing could be waived, actually. So you may have to come back and hold a public hearing on it, but getting the cart a little before the horse, maybe, but we're asking for approval on a building reuse grant.
Okay, comments, questions by board members? Ashley, anything you need to add to that?
Just that you have the resolution in your packet.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion as we, as stated.
Okay, motion approved. Second, discussion, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, like sign. Okay?
Okay, thank you so much. Make sure I don't go along on this. Ashley called and asked if I, if I could come in and say some words about the, about the meeting, about the boardroom.
Chuck, maybe y'all just back up and just tell what you did in your former life, so people will know sort of why you, how you know all this stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, let me, I'll get to that. Okay, so Ashley, Addison says, would you talk about the boardroom? And when he first asked, I thought, man, what a, what different thing to ask. And I kept thinking about it, and it's a good idea, you know, to celebrate this room and to celebrate things that happened in this room. So I was hired in this room back in, back in 1987, and sat in Ashley's, Ashley's seat. I'm honored to make a, make a few comments about, about things that happened. You know, starting with the staff, just looking at the staff people that you've had here tonight, or that were here and left, and you've got William and Allison, and I won't mention Terry, but Craig, and Linda Onyefra, that were, now Chad and others are here as well, but these people have been here for a while. They're professionals. You guys are, you guys are blessed. The other thing that you're blessed with is that there was a lot of nice things that happened in this room. There was also a lot of stress and a lot of difficulty. And some of that difficulty is that the county has grown up and matured, but part of it is how you guys are doing your business. And you cooperate, and you communicate, and you meet with other, other entities. And we didn't always do that, and there was some, there were some hard times in this room. And I'll, maybe, I'm not going to mention all of them. They may come back from, you know, come back on me. But I mainly stay, stay positive. But there was, there was some consternation that took place in here. So some comments on the room. The room is where the county conducted business, where you, where you made decisions, and that happened over, over a 50-year period of time. It's also a room where democracy took place. There were elections. There was announcements about who won in this, in this room. Thousands of meetings took place in the room, and the room will continue, but it just won't continue as a, as a place where the, where the Commissioners meet. So again, there's considerable accomplishment and some conflict. When, when I was hired, I said, and there was more than two really good things that the county had done, but there were two really good things that the county did before my, my being here. One was building this building. And on this, in this building, you had DSS upstairs. And then on this floor, you had cooperative extension, you had elections, you had building inspection, you had my offices, you had finance, and you had tax assessing and tax collecting, all in this floor, almost right out of the gate. And it was a pretty, a pretty small type, but the building was here, and we were, I was real happy that it was. The second one is the purchase of the Nastrom property, which was done in 1980, and maybe the most far-reaching thing that those previous boards did. Mr. Ellis, your father was, was on that board, and there was a purchase of 265 acres of property in West Marion that was purchased in 1980. That's the home of the YMCA, the hospital, the Health Department, the law enforcement center, mental health, the armory. And whether you guys know it or not, there's probably still 15 acres out there waiting for some, some need. But that was really an accomplishment, and something that is, is good. So if you, if you kind of go back and just talk about some things that happened, in 1987, the county didn't necessarily realize it when, when I was hired. It wasn't, it wasn't known until about three or four months after I was hired. Allison's a new hire, and the county was bankrupt, and had a fund balance that was in the negative. And I asked the auditor if she'd ever heard of such a thing. And she said, yeah, but, but the county had a negative fund balance. We were, we were broke, and the state was threatening to basically take, take the organization over. That happened because DSS expenditures weren't budgeted properly, and because tax-exempt properties were kept in a revaluation that should have been pulled, and that the wrong value was used. There was a lot of consternation over that, and a lot of puzzlement over why we did what we did, and why we behaved so tight-fisted. And it was because we, we had very, very little in the way of resources. But look at what we still managed to do. We purchased the DSS building, the Wynn Dixie building, about $250,000, from my memory is what we paid for it. You guys may not realize this, but high school students with Dean Botha and Jim Wiseman did that complete renovation with their, with high school student labor. So we, we basically got, got that done. The industrial park was done, was done real early. The pay-as-you-go school building plan that was done, saved well over $70 million. Fred was, I didn't overlook Fred on, or I did, Ben, Ben, he's been here a while. He was on the school board when the, when in this room, it was finalized, it was discussed first time at a, at a school board meeting. We had students in mobile classrooms. We had students in schools that were not air-conditioned. We had them in schools that, I won't say they were not safe, but they were in desperately renovation. We saved over $70 million in new school construction, and basically went through and renovated every school. And that, that was a, that was a big deal. The decision to recruit the prison was made. That was real consternation. A Chuckism is, have you ever sat in front of a A Chuck-ism is, have you ever sat in front of a couple hundred angry people? Well, I have, you know, and that was, that was one of the times. Uh, but look at what it's done. You know, you've got four hundred people working, making a good, good wage, good benefit, um, and no one's escaped like all the, all the concern and the worry was. Um, that was a, that was a good decision and put water in sewer. I'll tell you, a hard decision was closing the landfill. And, and people forget about that. That saved millions and millions of dollars. At the time, it was a fearful, concerning decision. Because what, what we were thinking is, oh, God, you know, we're gonna get, we're not gonna control our garbage flow and we're, we're gonna be held hostage and, uh, we need to stay in the landfill business. And it was real clear that we didn't need to stay in the, in the landfill business. But that decision was made here in this room, and it was, it was really, really hard. Construction of the jail and the law enforcement center. I was sitting about where Patrick is. A young man hung himself in our jail, multi-storied. We had a jailer running up and down, Brenda, uh, running up and down the, the stairs. It was at a minute when he wasn't under observation and a, a young person hung himself, took his life. Jail inspector comes into the next meeting. I'm sitting there, and he said, are you the manager? And I said, yes, sir. And he walked up to me, leaned over, put his hands on the desk and said, I want a report from you in two weeks about your process to build a new jail. Because you will do it or you'll be shipping, um, inmates all over the state of North Carolina. And we, of course, did that. That was a, a process that caused a lot of pain. Uh, that was a real debate and conflict over whether to try to renovate here or whether to move it out where we did. And hopefully, hopefully, we did a good decision. William, can you help me on this? EMS used to be housed in here. They were building the building. And EMS actually operated out of, it's out of here a little, uh, while the, while the building across the street was, was being built. Congratulations to you guys on, on opening up your new, your new station that you'll soon, your, uh, that you'll soon open. Uh, I'll remind you, the property on Barnes Road was purchased in this, in this room, and it serves, it's a great site for, for what you guys are, what you guys are doing. Uh, one, probably the, the biggest criticism of the county that I heard daily was that, uh, you guys should, should have been in the water and sewer business. You should have been, you should be in the water business, and we weren't. And the answer the Commissioners gave back then was what I just said. We're not in the water business. You need to go see the city. And if you were four or five miles away from a water line, you were, you were out of luck. A man named D.A. Grayson made a ten thousand dollar contribution, and a water line was put into the Nebo Elementary School. And the county was involved in the extension of water and sewer lines all over. I could sit here for sixty minutes. And it's really one of the basic things that we did. I am going to hurry. Clinchfield Sewer was controversial. We had a three million dollar water and sewer grant. I can't tell, some of the stories I, I just can't really tell. But we got that done, and there were people that didn't want to do that. I'm, I'm going, none of you guys were, were here then. But, um, and I, I remember, another Chuck-ism is, well, we'll put it on the agenda and talk about it. And you've got the media, you know, saying, well, no, we don't want to do that. You know, uh, Clinchfield Sewer was an important, an important project.
Chuck, we got a hundred and eighty-six English, if you remember.
Yeah, you can see it, it was on the board, if you want, but, um, it was, it was an important, uh, project. Controversy, uh, I will talk about some of the people that were in this room, but we had, again, quite a bit of conflict. The citizens, uh, uh, I don't know if they were more aggressive or what, but, um, there was almost always some conflict in this room. We had to remove people forcibly, uh, from the, from the room. Again, this is before, before you guys. And it made it very stressful to come in here and manage and try to, and try to run, run the county. Luckily, um, things, things smoothed out a whole lot. Um, the Universal Building was purchased in this room. A lot of people say, Chuck, that's one of the best things you guys, you guys ever did. That was a three-two vote. Uh, and, uh, was, caused some difficulty, uh, from, from some of the board members. Uh, the, the, a lot of these buildings, like the senior center and the jail, they've paid for themselves because we designed them in a way where you lease space out, and the Universal Building has, um, has certainly paid for itself in a very, very short period, period of time. Um, you guys have done courthouse construction in here and made a lot of progress. The EMS base, uh, new, new station that you're doing is, is strong as well. The conflict, a few of the others, the prison, the airport was, was, uh, just, think, that, that's probably a, a real regret is that one, that one not getting, getting done. And again, sometimes we had to, had to remove people. So a whole lot was accomplished, a whole lot of difficulty occurred. Uh, this, this room, uh, just brings back great memories, um, and, uh, great accomplishment that was done. Think for a minute about the people that have been in here over the years. And, and, um, you know, the Commissioners you've had, this is a fifty-year use, and you've had in excess, um, of forty, forty Commissioners that have, that have served. About half of them are deceased at this, at this time. Um, I remember sitting there, the only Commissioner story I'm gonna tell is Bob Love. You guys not remember Bob Love?
Go ahead.
He sat next to me, and I'd look over at him, and he'd have the, his tie in his mouth, and he'd be chewing on it in the meeting, you know? And he would say, under his breath, he'd say, boys, we can't afford that. And I'd say, Bob, speak up. Say that, you know, and then he'd make, aye, I'm for it, aye, you know? And then, uh, another funny, it's a Bob, uh, a Bob story as well. Uh, I tried, and I had voted down a spay and neuter policy, uh, maybe even twice. Uh, and in other words, you used to be able to adopt a dog or a cat and, and, you know, you just, you know, it just would reproduce. And Bob, Bob Hunter, I mean, uh, I, I can hardly say it without laughing. Bob Love sat in the meeting and proceeded to tell how animals are handled on the farm. Because it's really, really easy. So anyways, think about the citizens, and I'll, I'll wrap up here. Uh, Charles Presley came in here. He was a big help. And, uh, we would get into conflict over hunting regulations. Doesn't come up now. But, uh, people would try to get the, the Commissioners to do electronic collars on dogs that would hunt bear and the bear hunters, and they would come pouring in here. And Charles would, hey, Chuck, you know, here's what you need to do, you know? So, and Charles recently, recently passed away, and he was, he was a very fine person. Dean Law, if you remember that, um, again, a lot of this stuff is foundation stuff. But, uh, Dean and Carol would, would come in and, uh, we were like the twenty-fifth county to do nine-one-one. And, uh, we also did an addressing system. And so Dean Law was always in here, always involved. Uh, Doc Buckner, you know, how could you not, not mention, you know, his phone number is still in my mind.
Two-six-nine-five.
Two-six-nine. And he, he looked at me one day and he said, look at here, son, you're all we got. That's why, Doc. He came in, there were like six or seven counties that didn't have fire district taxation. And he led an initiative, um, that did a whole lot, had a lot of other things going on that established the Marionian area fire district and then allowed fire districts to be put in place in, in all of our, um, all of our area. Earl Daniels would come in here, and he would make sure we understood that, um, uh, city taxpayers paid county taxes. Earl, we get it. But, but, uh, a lot of city-county stuff, uh, that, that went on that was, that was good.
We've got the best relationship ever between the city and county. I want to highlight that right now.
And again, that's back to your committee, your, your committee meeting and talking. And David, you know, David did that, uh, committee, uh, meeting. You know, that was, that was his. Tilly, you remember Tilly Twitty? She, she was in here, um, over, um, water and sewer being needed in Morehead Road. And so we, you know, we did get a CDPG grant, and it was a minority community that was kind of, had gone, we'd gone, the city had gone around it. Um, not, not on necessarily anything, uh, purposeful, but it, it needed to have sewer. And so, um, I remember her coming in and we, we applied for that and got that done. There were sometimes political people in here like Bob Hunter and Charles Taylor and your elected representatives that would, would come in. So there was always that political end of things. A real funny story, Bob Haynes came in here, a former sheriff, and he, and he was asking for more, for more resources. This was right out of the gate. And he told the story of the, um, of the, of the deputies having to share a bulletproof vest. And I, and I said, you are kidding me. They really shared a bullet, they shared a bulletproof vest? I mean, how do you pick which person, you know, gets to wear it? So that was, that was fun. David Ricketts would come in and sharing, and David in particular, he would tell us how we didn't fund the schools enough and we were, we were lacking on that. You had donations of, with people like Max, Max Butler, Bud Hoven, who donated property for the nutrition site. You had a lot of things like that go on. And then last sentence, you had, you had things like, uh, Boy Scouts and Eagle Scouts and veterans, and you had a lot of celebration of, of people that were recognized. And don't you know, all of those people have got memories of coming into this room and receiving a certificate, a four-H award or, or something like that. So there was just a lot of, a lot of good. I hope I did what you wanted because I've, I've been all over the board, but, um, congratulations on your new, on your new facility. And know that I really am honored to get to come in and talk to you. So thank you.
Thank you, Chuck, for covering about, what, fifty years of history right there in thirty minutes? You did good. You covered fifty years in thirty minutes. I said, you did good.
Twenty-six, twenty, twenty-six.
All right, Chuck, thanks, sir. A lot of history. You've heard some of it. A lot of names that have come and gone. And, uh, here again, it's, we're just doing what other men and women have done before us and, and hopefully, uh, people see that the board has a real desire to, to, to be positive and partner with people and groups to get things done. It's not about us being seen as board members. Uh, if we're in the shadows and things are happening, that's what it's all about. So, uh, thank you, uh, Chuck, for that presentation. Very informative. And, um, if you want to hear some of the tales, he kept telling the room, calling up sometime, he'll tell you all about them, okay, Chuck? Now, let's go ahead and get Chad up. Chad, good to see you, and thanks for going ahead and, and deferring to Chuck, uh, for about forty-five minutes. Chad is our Recreation Department Director. Uh, he's new to that position. How long you been there now, Chad?
Uh, going on eight months, sir.
Eight months. We got Chad hired out of the private sector, uh, was doing outstanding job with Miller Construction Group. Uh, former retired military officer, and the Rec Department is just running on all cylinders. There's a lot of great things that are happening. He's gonna tell about some of it. Uh, thanks to our partners at the state, Doug LeGreen, Ralph Heiss, uh, the Speaker of the House, Moore, and that crowd for bringing four and a half million dollars to be used over there at the Rec Center proper. And, uh, you know, so Chad, we're, we are, we are gung-ho, ready to get you what you need to move this thing to the next level. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. It's always a pleasure to come before the board and do updates on your Parks and Recreation Directorate. We are, uh, we're blessed and, and we're happy to be part of what we're doing here in the county. And it's always nice to segue from, with what Mr. Abenath is putting out, just talking about, uh, our past and, and certainly excited about our future. Uh, and so I think the primary purpose of me being here tonight, sir, was to talk about our gun range and where we're at with that. So I won't keep anybody, and certainly not your precious time. Uh, and so what I would say is, based on the information we got from our contractor, uh, we estimate being into the third week of March with their construction schedule. And then at that point, um, the County Manager and I would, before then, had to come up with some sort of plan to open. We're working on that now, uh, with what we would like to see as far as a soft opening and then maybe a grand opening type thing. Um, Mr. Craig Walker and I finished his pass, uh, on Saturday, we finished the Chief RSO course with the NRA. It was a three-day course. It was incredibly valuable. Happy to do that. We ran down to Hudson and took care of that over three days. And, and many things we picked up from that, but one of which is that this is an incredibly, uh, thi- this is a, an endeavor which will require our full attention. It's gonna require a great deal of safety. Uh, it's gonna require that we make sure we run it in the best interest of the general public from, from both standpoints. One, from a recreational side, but also to make sure that each individual comes out there, has an opportunity to participate and do so in a safe manner, in the safest manner we can. So I think that's what we're doing. I feel like as we look at the, the systems that have been put in place already with the general construction and what the group did, uh, to do the architectural pieces of it, and we have a, a safe facility there. It's just depending on us now to implement the programs. And I think that's one of the issues that we wanted to talk about tonight. Is that right, Mr. County Manager?
You've got three action items, uh, as a board that we need direction on, uh, the rules, the fees, and the hours. And these, all three can be amended down the road, of course, it's not cart and stone, but we need to get these, uh, approved so we can get moving on.
Okay, let's start with the hours then, or in reverse order. We've seen that. Uh, this is the second reading of this document. So are there any concerns about the hours?
I have none.
Okay, Chris?
Motion to approve the, the hours as presented.
Any second discussion, Patrick, you doing? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed, light sign. Go to the fees, which I think are tremendously fair to whoever wants to shoot. So anyway, questions, comments for Chad, staff? Okay, it's a pleasure to the board concerning the fees as presented.
Motion to approve the fees as presented.
Okay, got a motion? Say goodbye, Brenda. Uh, discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed, light sign. Okay, and standard operating procedures? Uh, so you've had a chance to look at that. One question we did have last month was the, uh, the, the Range Safety Officer is, is surrounded by firearm, fire, firearms. I say country fire arms, you know, but firearms. So we've got, we, a concern I had was they need to be armed, they need to have the proper permit to carry concealed, not open carry concealed. Uh, that way they wouldn't be a target because they need to be able to finish themselves. We got a great Sheriff's Department and a great, uh, City Police Department, but, uh, to get that site, a good ten minutes, getting it with all you got, uh, to that heel side up there. So my, the only thing I see in the whole document is just, I, I want to see that person be able to carry concealed, and they need to have the proper permitting to do so.
Yes, sir. Uh, so we split very briefly about that tonight when I, when I came in, just for a couple of the board members. Uh, I'm prepared to obviously carry out whatever the board's wishes are from a safety standpoint through, again, through picking up some information in this course. It is recommended that the individuals, uh, who are employed there carry, but it's recommended that they carry open. In the state of North Carolina, you're allowed to do so. Um, and the thought process behind having an open carry, sir, is that it's much easier to be able to pull a sidearm from an open carry position than it is to have to fumble with it behind your back or your coat pocket.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that, too.
Talking with the, with County Manager, we can do, we can make that at any point, right? Whether it has to be, you want to see it tonight or we can add it.
I want, I want the document to do it tonight. That way it's knocked out for myself. That's, I'm one member though.
My thoughts were table it and have some discussion so that we get the verbiage right.
Brenda's, Chris, and we'll go to Patrick.
I'm good with deleting that item out. I mean, if we need, is there other policies that we need to look at as well?
We have a policy that covers firearm, uh, usage in buildings and facilities. That could cover that situation as it's written now.
As it's written.
Right, now it says shall not, though. I think that phrase needs to be strict.
So if you took that all out, we have a separate policy that would.
That would enable the Range Safety Officers to carry?
That's right.
Okay.
We'll, we'll let it enable them to carry open.
I'll get back to you on that. It's typically related.
As long as we're following the state guidelines, I'm, I'm good.
I'm, yeah.
All right, did we hear a motion then?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to change, it's item five on page six of the document. Staff firearm responsibilities while on duty, staff members shall not carry a firearm. Um, change that to staff firearm responsibilities while on duty, staff members will be staff members will be required to open carry a firearm.
Yeah, all right.
That is, and that is with state guideline.
Yes, sir.
And then if the state changes, then we can revise the procedure.
Now, yield of the county manager on speaking about what it is that the county policy is over. As far as the state of North Carolina, open carry policy is, I'm certain on that.
Okay.
Would the state policy supersede county policies anyway by statute?
Only if it's a law.
Okay.
Wildlife Resources doesn't, um, you have jurisdiction over this, uh, this area. But if they have a law, we'd have to follow it, of course.
Second motion.
Okay, second discussion?
Let me make an amendment. Let me change the word will to shall, shall carry.
Okay, uh, who's got the second?
Second.
Okay, you mean the second, okay. All right, discussion? All in favor, say aye. I oppose the light sign, okay? Uh, and I will say this, uh, the chairman, he, he had a real strong desire to see this kind of pass and, and, uh, shared that with the board. And the board, Brenda, remember, got a hundred percent behind that. And history, you know, Chuck gave history. Burke County fought, uh, some neighbors fought where this, and we recruited to McDowell County. And how many, uh, of these partnerships are in North Carolina right now, Chad? What, is there three?
I can tell you, I've had to go all the way to Pender County and the coast to be able to pick up another partner and talk about NCWRC range. I mean, with the exception of what we have in Cleveland County, I've had to go all the way to Pender County to talk to folks. So there's not that many, sir.
So there's three?
Yeah, two.
So three. So I think that, um, we're very fortunate that we've got one of the, one of the three here in McDowell County. And also fortunate that the cost to construct was a 90-10 split. 90 federal or state, whatever, and 10 county. So that made it, uh, easier to pull this thing off. And I say, uh, thanks to this board for having the desire to have recreational uh, and, and learning experiences for people, men, women, young people, uh, to, to shoot with a supervised, in a supervised situation, in a safe environment. And, uh, we know our staff will do an excellent job in administering this program. Total accomplishment, you guys.
Thanks, sir.
Chad, can you speak for two or three minutes about Little League?
Yes, sir.
And the merger and how, maybe how many signed up and encourage other ones to get out and sign up?
Be happy to, Mr. Allison. So, um, prior to report as of today, uh, Mr. Price reported to us that there was over 300 children have already signed up for the Little League, uh, programs. Um, we had a meeting with coaches, I think it was Monday. Looking actually how, like he keeps up with my schedule. Uh, Monday, I believe it was, we met at the, at the Rec Center.
Yes.
You were there, sir. And, and the report from that is typically in the past, it's been, uh, three or four coaches that come to that meeting, uh, and we had over 35 that were there. Um, and so what we're, what I'm telling you is, is that the reception that we're seeing is very positive. Uh, what we are doing is that we're feeling a lot of questions on a daily basis about why it is we have chosen to take away the community ball teams. And I would like to speak on that and, and stress the importance of assimilation is really what we're fighting for here with our children. I mean, when they go to, if you go to Pleasant Gardens or PG or, or any one of the elementary schools, you don't go to that middle school there. You go to a different school. You go to a school where you meet new kids and you see new faces and you have new experiences. And that's what we're really trying to kind of get the ball rolling, so to speak, for our children is, is that if we go ahead and get them now into these programs where they meet, it's not like they're meeting kids from Polk County. These are kids within their county, folks that they see at Walmart, go to church with, see on Saturday when they're out at the parks.
That they'll be playing with as they move up into, to high, high school.
Yes, sir. And what we, you know, it, it goes without saying that if you can create that relationship prior to then actually being on a team at middle school and then maybe they play a little ball together here at, at some of our Little League teams, then we feel like we're going to make better teams at those levels. Um, and it's, it's absolutely goes, you know, for, for all the way up to the high school, you know, talking with Coach Smith and trying to make sure that we provide our, our children in this county with not only a safe and fun experience, but we make them as competitive as possible. Cause my personal goal is, is I want to see McDowell County Little League played on TV. And we're never going to be able to do that if we, if we stay where we're at. We've got to grow. Change is sometimes scary, as you all know. Sometimes change is, you know, there's, there's a little bit of opposition towards it, but we've, we've tried our best and we'll continue to do so to educate citizens and the county on why it is we want to do it and why it's a good idea. But we, the response thus far has been wonderful, sir.
That's awesome.
And, and this is a, just a misconception I heard, uh, in, in the community the other day. This is a partnership.
Yes.
That is governed by an agreement that the parties mutually sign that also if it didn't work out, uh, to everybody's expectation, there's always the, the document that shows you how you can just pull back out and, and you can do. But the thing is though, it's a partnership and the, the chance to, to, uh, be involved in the Little League system is a nationwide deal. And, uh, so thanks to our volunteer coaches who saw this as a good thing and, and who are promoting it in a positive manner. And, uh, we, we think, I think it's going to be good and, and you know, it's, like I say, it's different, but hey, we'll work through the kinks because that's what this board does. We, we try to partner at every chance and ever, and you're, and this man right here is the, uh, you're the, uh, on the, the board that governs this now.
Yes, sir.
You're the president, correct?
Uh, no, sir. I, I was asked to be the chair.
Chair.
Because of some other things that were going on outside of the state. I was just taking a position as a voting member on the board.
Got you.
Yes, sir.
And how long do kids have to sign up?
Uh, we'll go all the way through March the sixth, March the sixth. I had to look at Craig for that, but I think it's March the sixth, sir. Uh, so we're wrapping up basketball now. Youth basketball is coming to an end. Uh, we tried to get in a couple more games for the kids that we were, that we had to cancel due to, due to, there was a, uh, concern over COVID at one point. So we pulled back, we canceled the game, getting that in. And so we'll segue right into, to baseball with Saturday, the April, April the ninth. I personally like to invite members of the board out. Uh, we're going to be at, um, Maple Leaf. We're going to have what we're calling a opening day bash. Uh, we're going to have cotton candy and vendors out there selling some food. And we're going to have just, you know, the kids are going to have a big day right there. And we're really excited about that, trying to make like a carnival-like atmosphere, some bouncy houses for kids. So, so even if you don't play ball, come out and just be part of, and, uh, you know, so I think it'll be great for everybody.
And the facilities, real quick, I know we got to move on, but I do want the public to understand that the, uh, there, there are, uh, things in, in play right now where you'll see Maple Leaf, there's going to be a new outdoor shelter that's going to be fenced in, that's going to have picnic tables, there'll be playground equipment. That way on a, a long hot day, when you've got multiple kids up there playing, they don't have to bake in the sun, they can go out in their shed, they can sit there, they can play on some stuff. And, and then you won't recognize within a year's time, year and a half's time, the board will be making decisions in, in the days to come. And our Rec Department proper, that, the, uh, there's going to be a, just a general change of that whole thing, you won't recognize it. And, and we're excited about the, uh, we've seen drawings, we've seen, um, documents and, and the board's going to be making decisions and getting it, cost estimates and, and that kind of thing moving forward. But, uh, it will just make you very proud of our Recreation Department and our programs and the facilities. For years, as Chuck said, uh, there were situations that were, that caused, uh, Chuck was tight as county manager. I served him and he was tight. Chuck, am I telling the truth or what? See, thank you. He had to be and he recommended that things this board. Now the board now, uh, we're not flushing money, but any chance, stretch of imagination, things are still tight. But, uh, we, we do, we're doing certain things to make sure that what we have and what you'll be using and what the people can enjoy, they can be proud of. And so we're looking forward to the end product.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Chuck.
Chad, good evening. All right, let's move to our next item on the agenda. Uh, we have our 2021 audit presentation. Serena Henson's here and, uh, the floor is yours. Welcome to the boardroom. We're glad to have you and, and, uh, we've seen some of your work and, uh, we're sort of excited about the fund balance going up. Fund balance went up and, uh, we're, we're doing, that's a great thing. So, good speaking.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Good evening to everyone. Uh, you should have a copy of the fiscal year 2021 audit report. Um, and then I have also provided some highlights. But I would like to start off by saying that we have issued a clean, unmodified opinion for fiscal year 2021. Um, we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Um, there were no prior audit findings for the fiscal year 2020. So that would be the prior year that we audited, which we would need to report on the status of those findings because there were none. Um, moving on to the highlights, I'm just going to briefly touch on that. So fund balance, total fund balance, um, on page one, went from 13.6 million up to 16.6 million for 2021. Um, as pointed out earlier, I thought I had it on here, I do. Um, percent of taxes collected went from 99.17% up to 99.5% collection rate. Um, available fund balance down at the bottom went from 18.69% to 20.64%. Previous guidance of the local government commission was that, um, there would be a minimum available fund balance of 8%. And that's the equivalent of about one month's operations. Um, they have changed that guidance this year, beginning this year. And so now the local government commission or the state treasurer's office has grouped the units of government by general fund expenditures for purposes of evaluating available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. It's no longer based on the 8%. So, um, the minimum available fund balance is 20% for McDowell County's group. Um, so it's 20%. And as I noted a few minutes ago, um, McDowell County's, um, available fund balance is 20.64%. So any questions on that? Um, along with the change that the state treasurer's office has made, um, they now have performance indicators, things that we, they just want to bring to your attention and, um, would like for the board to respond on. And so, um, there were three performance indicators. The first one was the 20.64%. Even though it's, it's above the 20% minimum, um, it's a little bit towards the lower end or closer to that 20%. So it's a little bit of a concern for them. But obviously you've made great strides. You've went from 18.69% to 20.64%. Um, and it has continued to grow. Um, you've went from 15.28% in 2019 to 18.69 in 2020 to 20.64% in 2021. So there is a pattern that is continuing to, to increase. So, um, the other positive side of that is it shows that you're not stockpiling tax dollars. I mean, of course you want to have the funds there for your, your reserves for an emergency, but it also shows that you're not just sitting on money, so. Um, the second performance indicator has to do with the water fund. And, um, they're basically showing that, um, a negative balance indicates that your rates are not covering your operating expenses. There was a $47,000 negative balance. Now keep in mind that your debt is included in that negative amount. So, um, just wanted to point that out as well. Um, you do have, you did increase your rates for 2022 for the water fund. So, um, we should see that turn around. So another positive to, to add to that. And then the last, um, indicator was because, um, us as auditors, we extended the audit this year. Um, and it had nothing to do with McDowell County. Um, Allison and Ashley have been wonderful to work with. They, they've always got everything ready for us and anything that we need, they're quick to respond. So, um, the reason for the extension was on our part. We had our own audit this year as we're required to do every three years. And, um, the person that handled that was a long-term employee that had retired. So, um, it just put us behind a little bit this year. But it's not uncommon for local governments to extend their audits either. So, um, they're, the state treasurer's office will want a response on those three indicators, uh, within 60 days. And I know Allison will be awesome to work with to help you with that. And, um, I'm here if you need any guidance as well, so. Any questions on anything that I've presented?
Yeah, with the, uh, with us being at the base, but still within the guideline of the, uh, general funds, uh, what would be your target per se?
Well, they did show that, um, the median was closer to 39%.
So almost double.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, I, I think each government, you know, that's, you know, just an indicator that's out there that of course they want everyone to sort of strive for. But, um, I think you need, you know, each government needs to look at, you know, what their needs are and, um, and determine what that might be for, for McDowell County.
Right. I know when we went through the class, uh, as a commissioner, Chris and I, we, we'd talked about, you know, we had heard it should be between 25 and 30% as far as our county size. But, uh, I do appreciate your, uh, efforts in the positive, uh, audit and we'll try to get these three taken care of.
All right.
Thank you so much.
If a percent equals one month's operating, what did, what does 20% equal?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, yeah.
All right, uh, we need to, uh, actually approve the 2021 independent auditors' report, correct?
That's right.
And, uh, then you'll talk about the contract, okay?
Like to, like to accept it as presented?
Okay, second discussion, all in favor, say aye. I oppose the light sign, okay? All right, Ashley, you'll take the second segment.
And we would, uh, request that, uh, Louder Milk Church, uh, do the audit for the current year. There is a slight increase and as noted, we have a tremendous amount of federal money coming through our books the next couple of years. And I think it's very important.
For 2022?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose the light sign, okay? Great. All right, Ms. Henson, thank you so much for you and your firm. You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time Commissioner Ellis has to leave. He's got an appointment that he's to attend.
Can I make a few reports that I was going to do at the end for you?
That's fine with me. Thank you.
Can you do it in three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Cause I got to go to work.
I will talk, maybe pass or never happen. Uh, so at last month's meeting, uh, the board had asked for some information on spay and neuter fees. Staff has done some research on that. Uh, the $100 fee that was requested by our staff last month is actually below where, uh, many of our peers are offering. Uh, we would ask maybe a little more time to, uh, firm that up. And as we transition into the new fiscal year, uh, we tend to keep a lot of our fee recommendations all together. So we might more than likely request some.
By the census, the board gives that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the other item that was a scheduling item and without the chair here, uh, we could wait until your next meeting.
What's the schedule item about?
I was going to get to that. Uh, the, uh,
We've got a minute.
We had our insurance meeting a couple of weeks ago that was postponed due to weather as well as solid waste meeting where you asked for some follow-up information. Uh, was that going to ask, and I can ask for if not possible, if the 28th would work for reporting back on?
What time?
In the evening?
I can do the evening or lunch or breakfast or?
I'll be able to, 28th.
Uh, we can do a poll tomorrow and get some other dates. If that works.
Sounds good. Like census poll.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's, that's all I have for reports later.
I appreciate everybody doing.
We hope you don't like your appointment.
Hope.
Hope you get a good report. Okay, um, thank you, Ashley. Let's move to the American Rescue Plan update, item A under old business.
Say, uh, in prior months, we've been just presenting information just where we stood on our rescue plan. Uh, we, we do have that as well tonight, but also, uh, an action item, uh, on our rescue plan. We, we do have that as well tonight, but also an action item. And so we are going to do every month, bringing to you amendments for when there's, when that's necessary. So what you've got tonight is an amendment two for our grant project ordinance. We did go ahead and put the full allocation, barring some, I don't know how to say it, something out of our control. We are scheduled by law to receive the 8.887567 ARPA funds. And so we've shown all of that over the two pages. So we'd ask that you approve it. Be glad to answer any questions you've got about how it's currently reflected. This should reflect everything that you've directed so far with ARPA funds.
Okay, questions, comments about the board? There being, and for the public too, there was no question right there, but board members talk constantly with staff back and forth between meetings. So board members have asked questions of staff on these dollar amounts right here and got a real good knowledge of what's happening. If, if there's not a question, just so you know, we're doing our due diligence, but we've done it before we got in the room.
Sure.
That's right.
Yeah.
So you're just asking for approval as presented?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve as presented.
Okay, second discussion, on our favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, light side. Okay, let's go to the building projects, which have been fast and furious. So Mr. Wooton, lead us out, sir.
Yes, sir. Talking about our, two of our major projects, the North Main Administrative Offices. You do have, hopefully, good news from us, I think it is, that we should be ready to move in the boardroom next month. It was a little questionable a few days ago with some fire issue, fire code issues, but those have been addressed. So we'll be able to move into the room next month. It is likely we might not have all of the technology installed that's been ordered or in process, but we will, it'll be a very nice room. Some of the furniture might not be in, but it'll, it'll be very nice. You'll like it very much. The lower level still scheduled to be completed in May, and we will move all of the staff that are currently in the annex at that time. The headquarters, as referenced earlier, also looks fantastic. That is, the walkthrough is scheduled with the contractor in February. It's, fees should be handled, handed over shortly thereafter for, I'm sure, a long process to move over staff and equipment. One issue we do have there, we are waiting on a backup generator that is, will not be in place more than likely before the end of the month. So that is a little bit of a holdup for, for that project. It's just supply issues that are everyone's experiencing. We talked about last month about current station one across the road here that opened, I believe, in '76 or '77. That's approaching 50 years old as well. There was a direction to staff to bring back some recommendations. We have talked to our architect about, about coming, and they're just a little covered up. Also talked to them about it. It probably would be more beneficial to them to go through and look at it once all the staff and equipment have moved out. Because if you've been through there, they do a great job, but they're on top of each other, which is why we're moving them, have equipment and furniture to the gills. So it would be a lot easier for an architect to go through with sort of a clean slate. So dependent on the recommendation is to wait until they move to have the architect go through in the process. That's it.
By the census, y'all good with that?
I'm fine with that.
Randy, anything to add to that?
No, I think that wait until everything's out would be the only way of really getting to where they can access, assess what needs to be done or if it's feasible budgetary-wise to upgrade that building.
We'll keep working on that.
Okay. All right, there's a direction, okay? Ashley, anything else under the, anything Terry needs to add back there? He's been awful quiet. Okay. Let's go to, let's see, that's going to be, let's go to administrative items under new business.
Thank, thank you. The first item, we have been working with a, a project, we'll call it Project Handbone, since it's still in that non-announcement stage, to lease the former pilot plant. And we are proposing that we do a lease with this project for three years, a little over $1,500 a month, 1540 to be exact. What we would request is that you approve the lease, subject to working out some of the details. Outside of the lease, there's some equipment that needs to be evaluated. There's some requests that have been made to the county. We just need to understand, show those costs, whether they would be borne by the county or the potential tenant. So subject to, and we could always bring it back, but the lease would not be proposed to change just some of the details.
Okay, questions by board members? Okay, let's pleasure the board.
Motion to approve as presented.
Okay, got a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, on our favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, light side. Okay, Ashley?
Thank you. The next is a contract, administrative contract for the Foothills Regional Commission. This is where they are doing the comprehensive land use plan. A lot of the support for our staff. They've already started with that, with the survey, and it was out a couple of weeks ago. They would have sent this earlier, but they've had some staff transition there. Ask you to approve.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, on our favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, light side. Okay.
You have EMS write-offs. I don't know if you want to do, want to catchalls or you like to go through each item.
Ashley, just real quickly, tell everybody, Randy, you go ahead, come right behind me and say this real quick. Real quick, tell everybody that these write-offs, what the process is real quick.
Sure.
How, how they get to here and all the work's been done.
So what we have every month are write-offs for EMS transports that cannot be collected. And so we have staff and a third-party vendor that now that will bill insurance, will bill Medicare, will bill Medicaid, TRICARE, all the different ones. But if someone does not have insurance, which is pretty common in our county, it's about 20% of our population, we're at the private pay level. And we will, we have to collect the bill, and we're very humane about it, of course, but we do garnishments and different things as allowed by law. But at the end of the day, there are some times where we're not able to collect. And a lot of these have been through multiple, multiple steps before we're here. And we're just, we're not allowed to go through.
Okay. Randy, go right ahead.
I make a motion that we do them as a group as opposed to going through an individual.
Got a motion?
Second.
Discussion, on our favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, light side. Okay, Randy, go ahead.
No, that was it.
Okay. That was a group. We got to prove them, though. You said them all as a group in your motion. You want to prove them now as a group?
Oh, yes. I make a motion for, you lost me.
Discussion, on our favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, light side. Okay. All right, thank you. Now, let's go to tax matters, item B. Ms. Wooton, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. These are routine as presented by the tax collector in a sense.
Okay, let's pleasure. Comments, questions? Pleasure, the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, on our favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, light side. Okay. All right, let's move to citizen comment. And if anybody is present that wishes to speak, we have a clip, nobody signed up, okay? All right, we'll give one last opportunity. Anybody want to speak? All right, there being nobody. Let's go to, we've heard staff reports. Commissioners have anything that he'd add? There being nothing, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Oh.
Oh, sorry. Before you adjourn, there is a resolution that was buried somewhere in your packet. If you approve it, it will set the median places, the new building.
All right.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Second. And that, that enables us legally to move from this location to our new location, formally, and things have to be done formally. So, on our favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, light side? All right, now, anything else?
Item, item one on economic development.
I think he, I think he missed that. Thank you for catching that. So one of the items on your memo is related to what was called Project Splice. And so you do have an incentive agreement, and they're subject to approval to the attorney, I think would cover us.
Okay. I will state for the record that our lease to that company side won't be voting, okay?
Do we need to make a motion to excuse you?
Yes.
Do we have enough?
But we don't have, you got three to vote.
No.
So motion table?
Motion to table it.
Second.
Second discussion, on our favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, light side, okay? Now, anything else?
That's all.
Okay. On behalf of the board, we want to say, everybody who's watching, have a happy Valentine's Day. And you still got time to go buy flowers or candy if Walmart's got anything left, okay? So do I hear motion adjourned?
Have a happy new adjourn.
To the new location, second discussion, on our favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, light side. Meeting is adjourned.